Jake, we all ready? Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the special meeting of the Garden City Zoning Board of Appeals. It's Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Our first order of business, just to say the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. If everyone would rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Be seated. Would the Secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Richard.
President.
Commissioner Hickman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
And Commissioner Bullock.
Here.
Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Someone cares to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda for November 5th, 2025, Wednesday.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any comments or questions on the motion? Take your roll, please.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hickman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Richard.
Yeah.
Commissioner Price.
Yeah.
Chairperson May.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And next, we have approval of minutes from the regular meeting of April 23rd, 2025.
I make a motion. We approve the minutes from the regular meeting, April 23rd, 2025.
I second.
Motion's made and supported. Any questions or comments on the motion? Take your roll, please.
Commissioner Hickman. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Bullock.
Upstain.
Commissioner Richard.
Yeah.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have public comment on non-agenda items only. If someone's here who wishes to comment on a non-agenda item, they can approach the podium and do so at this time. There are only non-agenda items. Seeing no one, we'll move on. And our business item is PPZ 25-0008. This is 28016 Ford Road. A consideration of a request for four-dimensional variances for the redevelopment of an existing structure to an automobile repair use. We can start off. Mr. Ortega's report, please.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. We're here tonight to consider this request for four separate variances for a proposed redevelopment. The site itself is located on the north side of Ford Road, on the west side of Helen Avenue, and the lot is currently occupied by a one-story manual self-car wash building, which has five car wash bays. And then the entirety of the lot's surface area is paved with hard surface, and the site itself is actually Zone C3, general business districts. The current car wash is technically legally non-conforming, because while C3 does permit car washes, they require special land use approval, and this car wash existed prior to that requirement. So right now, the car wash is operating as a legally non-conforming use. But the applicant is proposing to redevelop the existing structure to create an oil change facility. Oil changes are considered minor auto repair, because they will not be storing any vehicles overnight, so it's a minor auto repair facility, and those minor auto repair facilities are permitted by right in the C3 district. However, based on the existing site conditions and based on the proposed site plan, because minor auto repair facilities must comply with specific requirements listed in the zoning ordinance, this proposed development in front of you would require four variances from those standards. And so specifically, just to outline them, the zoning ordinance requires a minimum lot area of 20,000 square foot. This existing site is 12,196 square feet, so that's a 7,800 square foot variance from the minimum lot area requirement. There's also a minimum lot width requirement of 150 feet. This site is 92 feet wide along Ford, and so this is in need of a 58-foot variance in order to establish this use. Also, one of the site design requirements is that the nearest edge of any ingress or egress drive shall be located at least 25 feet from the nearest point of any property zoned or used for residential purposes. And there is an ingress egress drive on Helen that is actually zero feet from the residential property to the north. We'll get in more into the detail of that request in a moment. And then finally, the fourth variance they're requesting is the fact that the zoning ordinance does require that any building for a minor auto repair facility shall be oriented, meaning configured, so that the open, that the service bay doors that vehicles enter do not face onto adjacent major thoroughfares, unless they are screened. So they could be facing Ford Road if they were screened, but that typically requires spacing and enough configuration to screen it, or possibly to have another building in front of it. And so the existing building is being proposed right now to utilize the existing bay doors and have them remaining fronting and facing onto Ford Road. So that's the need for the variance for that particular standard. You have my review letter with regards to all the various approval criteria that should be considered during your deliberation. I'll just point out some highlights. The first and typically the most, one of the first things we look at is practical difficulty. Mainly, that means if compliance with these ordinance requirements would either create a practical difficulty on the site, whether it's, whether these, compliance with these standards would unreasonably prevent the use of the property, or if compliance with these standards would, and such restrictions are considered unnecessarily burdensome upon the redevelopment of the site. So in regards to lot area, lot width, that would require the, for this site to comply, the applicant would have to basically obtain additional property. The only additional property is available to the west, so in order to comply with those two standards, they have to buy additional property of the currently operating use to the west. And then also, compliance with the open bay orientation requirement would require the applicant to tear down this existing structure and construct a brand-new structure. Now, taking all of those three together, you know, it could be considered unnecessarily burdensome, but that would be based on an assumption that this particular site should be utilized as an auto repair. Now, not all C3 zone properties can accommodate every type of permitted use, but in the end, the question before you is whether to evaluate if preventing the use of this site is unreasonable. If it's unreasonable to apply these standards to a platted lot, to an existing development, and require them to comply with these standards, or then to basically, and then basically that would involve the non-redevelopment of the site. But that means the existing use could continue. One other aspect of the fourth variance, compliance with that 25-foot setback from Helen, on Helen Avenue, 25-foot curb, would require the installation of a 25-foot curb away from the home, and then having a new curb cut. It's feasible. It might cause some, a little bit of an issue with vehicles entering the site and going into that closest bay on the east side of the building, but it's feasible if they used another bay. But actually, in conversations with the applicant, after they've looked at this review letter, they said they would actually be amenable to installing the curb, putting it 25-foot away from the residence to the north, and then complying with the standard. I would suggest during the applicant's comment period, they discuss that and indicate that, and if that is the case, then there would only be a need for three variances for this particular site.
Are they required to have stacking spaces for the parking leading into that?
The zoning ordinance is mute to it. It doesn't specifically say it. From a practical functionality standpoint, and from some of the other standards of the zoning ordinance, there should be some stacking. So that's why my letter postulates the possibility of not utilizing that farthest east bay, and then instead shifting it to the farthest west bay, because based on their proposed site plan, they want to use the three on the east side. But if they didn't use that farthest east bay and use the west one, then there would be more space for vehicles to enter the property, stack on the property, and not cause any kind of vehicle stacking onto Helen. That could be an issue.
Those bays aren't all the same size either, are they?
I don't, I want to say that at a minimum, they're capable of handling vehicles. Now, whether they're also capable of handling the worker's space that's necessary in an oil change bay to, for them to, you know, maneuver around the vehicle and keep all their equipment, I'm not sure.
I noticed, I don't know that either, but I noticed on the plans that the two bays on the east end are about three feet wider than the bays, the other bays.
Yeah, and based on their, and also because they're proposing that office to be located in, like, on the west side of the building, it does make sense to try and maximize the amount of space and keep it all on the east side of the building. But then the question does become stacking, and I imagine it would, in theory, it could be accommodated with good management, but that can vary from operator to operator. If this operator might comply with it, it's not, also technically, as a variance require, I mean, excuse me, as a power of the zoning boards of appeals, for variances, you can apply conditions to those. So you can apply a condition, for example, stating that there shall be no stacking on Helen, and then the applicant would have to find some solution to that, to ensure there's no stacking on Helen.
That would be hard to enforce.
It would. It would come down to an enforcement issue. It's not exactly easy, as exactly as you said. I would say, though, that it's an option for you to consider if you wanted to go that route. Looking a little further through the different various approval criteria, looking at aspects of, for example, like, public safety and welfare, the intent is, this is point number three on the second page, excuse me, third page. We look at, the spirit of these regulations will be observed, and the public safety and welfare secured. As noted, the current use is a car wash, which is an auto-oriented facility, and the establishment of the auto repair facility would not necessarily increase the traffic volume nor change the vehicle access pattern of the current use, is not being proposed. One aspect of functionality of the site that has been brought to our attention is that the current use, because it's a manual car wash, has no staff, and rarely, if ever, there's any occupied, it's rarely ever occupied by the owner or manager of the property. While if this was an oil change use, it would require staff on-site at all times that it's open, and the applicant has indicated they would potentially provide vehicle, or gates that would prohibit access onto the site when it's, when the business is closed. And the reason for that is there have been reports, at least colloquially from the neighbors and from the property owner, that there are people gathering there and doing illegal activity on the site. So in theory, if the site were occupied and then it was fenced off at night, that potentially could increase public safety and welfare. As a side note, as ancillary to the redevelopment of the site. But once again, that's just colloquially speaking, and we don't have any facts of that. I don't have any specific police reports indicating that's the case, but it's still a possibility. Looking at some other aspects that the redevelopment could improve, and we look at whether granting the variances would, for example, alter the neighborhood character. These variances, if granted, we don't believe would substantially alter the character of the neighborhood, because the current, once again, the current use is a car wash, we're going to, which is auto-oriented, it would be going into an oil change, which is also an auto-oriented use, so you're not necessarily looking at a neighborhood character change. And one other aspect in terms of redevelopment of the site, you know, this would allow for redevelopment of a property. Manual car washes typically don't have a lot of alternatives other than tearing them down. We've had one other manual car wash in the city on Ford Road that was just recently redeveloped as a manual car wash, so that, even that was a much larger site, there was a lot of other possibilities for that, and that didn't see any other type of redevelopment. So this potential redevelopment would allow for investment in the property, change the use, once again, have it operated and lighted, and in theory, under point 10, where we're looking at whether this promotes the orderly development, granting of the variances by allowing the redevelopment, in theory, could allow for advancement in the site. And then whether, another positive aspect would be in terms of traffic flow. While right now, the car wash bays also, as I mentioned, face Ford Road. They have officially two curb cuts, a 24- and 26-foot wide dual curb cuts onto Ford Road, but then even the raised curb between them is minimal to nothing. I mean, the reasoning behind zoning practice to require the orientation of bays away from major roads is so the vehicles don't directly exit onto the main road, so you'd have four vehicles exiting directly. If this site, and that can currently happen right now. If the site were redeveloped, they would be required during site plan review to install a raised curb, and probably vegetation or some other means of directing the exiting vehicles, so that there's only one measured 24-foot wide curb cut onto the site, so vehicles would be controlled, and it would no longer allow for four vehicles potentially exiting directly on the Ford Road. It'd be one access point on the Ford. So that could increase the traffic flow onto the site. So those are just some of the aspects to consider. You know, there are some things that we just aren't sure of in terms of no nuisance ampacs, you know, the generation of dust noise, fumes, vibration. We're not sure, you know, if this would substantially alter that, because it is still, it still would be an auto-oriented use. So whether there's no nuisance, it's people's personal opinion as to whether those uses would be still objectionable by being in close proximity to residences. That can be an issue in relation to that. And also, in the end, I do believe that the substantive issue is whether the strict compliance should be adhered to, and if in that case, then it would not, the site would not be capable of being redeveloped. But whether that's unnecessarily burdensome, whether that requirement rises to the level of being a burden, is the question before you. So in summary, whenever the zoning board grants a variance from the requirements of the zoning ordinance, it shall be based upon indicating which of these criteria listed in the zoning ordinance have been met. Any motion you make must indicate which variance criteria support the decision to grant a variance or not. And so in making your determination, you can also specify the grounds for your decision, and you can also, as I mentioned, provide criteria or conditions upon any approval granted. So if the zoning board of appeals determines that the criteria have been met, you may grant these variances. And I will take any questions at the appropriate time.
Do the board have any questions?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead. All right. I know there are a couple other repair facilities in the neighborhood, the old Dewey's Transmission, and then there's another facility up on, what, Gilman Street there.
Yeah.
How do they fit in with the compliances that this place would have to?
That's a good point. A lot of these facility, and forgive me, there's a point in where I do talk about this, and I mentioned the west side of Harrison, but I do meant the east side of Harrison. On Ford, east side of Harrison, as you mentioned, there are several auto repair facilities. They've continued to exist because they existed prior to these requirements. Prior to requiring 20,000 square foot and 150 feet of width, there wasn't that standard, and so they were established then, and they've been continually operating as these auto repair facilities. So they're allowed to be, as long as they don't stay vacant for more than six months, they're allowed to be reestablished. For example, just across the street, the Outback Auto Repair Facility, they were vacant for a while, but they were redeveloped in time to maintain their legal nonconforming status and continue. And so now that has been redeveloped as another Redford Auto. And then there are even smaller places on the north side of Ford, two blocks down, I believe. It's the one that's at the Black Onning, forgive me, I don't know the name, but it's...
Brenn's?
I think so, yeah. I think that's what it is. And interestingly enough, that's basically a major auto repair facility, because I think they do brakes, but they also do transmissions and those other type of things. And they're actually one of the better maintained and operated auto repair facilities for major auto repair, and they're small. They're not 20,000 square feet, they're not 150 feet in width, and they're practical in their amount of customers they take in. Their vehicles are stacked and are parked in designated parking spaces, and they don't, to the best of my knowledge, I haven't heard of any nuisances directly from that operator. So basically, the others have been allowed to continue because they existed prior to this requirement, and that's why the car wash is allowed to continue. Well, the car wash is a separate issue, but, yeah, that's the reason, they just existed prior to these standards.
The main reason we have the two requirements for the 20,000 square feet and the 150 feet of frontage seems to be that auto repair is lumped in with service stations in the definition, and I'm wondering if that's appropriate.
That is true. Within the zoning ordinance, we say, I believe the standards, you know, my personal, my professional opinion would be that those standards are based on how gas stations used to work. Gas stations used to be the place where you also get auto repair. Right now, the only one left is the Snoco, now Shell, at Ford and Inxter, and that one, when they, they've just been redeveloped, and they actually chose to keep, well, based on the lease requirements, they were required to keep between the operators, the auto repair and the gas station. And so that's why, and so that's, I believe our ordinance reflects those standards and that requirement. But I will say, when it comes to our lots on Ford Road, the fact they don't go very deep, it would, it would be practical from a planning and zoning standpoint to have some minimum standard for the size, for the lot area and width for these auto repair facilities, if only because typically, these facilities tend to cut their nose despite their face. They don't tend to operate in good faith with their neighbors. There are some that had to go through a very rigorous enforcement policy. I believe it was on the south side of Ford, two blocks, two blocks east, west of Inxter. You've got the, you know, you got Arbor, I mean CBS, and then you got the Flower, Flowers by Renee, and then there's another auto repair. That took a long time for it to get them into compliance, because they had smaller spaces. But once again, that's a major auto repair. I think that's a key distinction. These are major auto repair, where they keep cars overnight, they just tend to keep cars beyond what they should. To have the distinction, this would be minor auto care, so they would not be allowed to have any vehicles parked overnight on the site. And so I think it comes to...
That should be the defining point, whether they're major or minor.
Right.
As far as lot size.
Yep. And I do believe, to your point, Mr. Chairman, is that when, for this particular site, making sure it can function based on its size and based on its width. To me, in my opinion, they're proposing a modest renovation, they're not expanding and adding more, but I do think the key thing about this redevelopment, whether it can function on a lot this small and a lot with this width, is the stacking, and that would be, and typically, I think you find these places tend to try and roll over as fast as they can. I don't know, they don't stick to 20 minutes anymore, but I think that's still their goal, to get the vehicles in and out as quick as possible. So this, I think the functionality of it is the basis for that 20,000-foot standard and 150 width.
I need to ask. This place, they want to do the oil change thing, do they have any relationship to the next door neighbors, sort of reading that thing?
Based on my knowledge, no, they don't. I don't know. I think, I shouldn't say, I don't know 100%. I believe this, I believe they do have own other property in the city, but I don't believe it's the adjacent property.
Then is this a new sale, or is it an original sale owner that wants to revamp it?
It is a new owner that wants to revamp it. This owner actually, forgive me, I do know, this owner does own some other adjacent property along Ford Road as well, and the applicant can clarify these information, but...
The reason I'm asking that question, because if it's somebody that knows somebody and wanted to purchase in it, then they already know the dimensions of the area, and they already know what they can put on and what they can't put on, and sort of, they're self-inducing themselves.
That is definitely an issue that you could raise, is the fact that, whether it's self-created or not. You know, and it's always a tough question, because on the one hand, they didn't create the lot width, they didn't plat the lot this way, but as you rightly point out, they did buy it in this condition. So whether that rises to, to whether it's a self-created situation, because they bought it under these conditions, I've seen ZBAs go 50/50 on this. It's usually a partially self-created situation.
Richards.
One question before we go. You brought up the Shell that I was going to bring up, more so the car wash down in between Ron and Schuman. When they put in for redevelopment, just like Shell, is there anything stating that they have to bring up to code during that redevelopment? Because if so, they're kind of in the same situation of not having the curtain, I believe it falls under D on this, of how we have all those bays, you can drive up and down Ford Road, those are two within the last. Shell was completed 18 months ago, I'm going to take a guess, car wash was 24 to 32 months ago when it was completed, and it, does it say they don't have to come into compliance because they're redoing it? If they're taking it all the way down to the ground just because they're not making new foundation, what would be the cause of that?
So with regards to the car wash that was redeveloped, the manual one, that one, because it was existing prior to these standards, and because of, they obtained legal nonconforming status, so the use could continue, and the redevelopment of the site was basically limited to the conditions allowable under the zoning ordinance, because mainly it was painted the site, but then they also redid the surface. So requiring them to come into compliance with the car, with other, with these standards for a car, well, with this car wash standards, the car wash standards are actually a little bit separate or different than this. But that redevelopment of the car wash, once again, they had legal nonconforming status, so they didn't have to bring everything up to code on there. With regards to the auto repair and the gas station at Ford and Inxter, they were legal nonconforming, but because of the level of redevelopment, I made them come to Planning Commission. They received special land use approval for that because of the amount of redevelopment they were going to do, because they substantially changed the gas station bays, and they added to the building. That's the other thing. They did an addition to that building, and because they changed the footprint, then they lose their legal nonconforming status. If they kept the building the same size, they would probably still have to come for planning, for a site plan from Planning Commission, but they wouldn't have to bring everything up to code. But because of, they did an addition of the building, in the building site, and they kept, they didn't expand the size of the auto repair. That's the reason they didn't have to come into compliance with that, with that open bay door situation.
Okay. I just wanted to do something modern. You know, Dewey's has been there forever, American forever, but having something 24 months kind of gives us an idea of what planning thought, what everybody else in the city thought, and kind of give us a leg to stand on. So, thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then is the applicant or the representative here there to come up and make your presentation for us?
Yes, good evening. Wes Issa Dearborn Heights. I'm the applicant, and I'm the tenant of this property. We don't own the property. I'm the applicant, and I'm the tenant of this property, we don't own the property.
You're going to be the tenant?
Yes.
Okay. Is the owner of the property here?
The owner of the property is not here, no.
Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Wes Issa. I'm the owner of all the Magical Touch Car Washes, Magical Touch Quick Loops. I'm the new owner of Warren Valley Golf Course in Dearborn Heights, that the city awarded me to have it two years ago, and I redeveloped, you know, the whole golf course. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Warren Valley Golf Course. I'm also the owner of the car wash on Inkster in Garden City, between Cherry Hill and Ford Road. I bought that a couple of years ago. As Mario knows, we went in there, and we did a hell of a job cleaning that place up and making it look beautiful and modern. And we're in a lot of the cities here in Michigan, Troy, Clanton Township, Allen Park, Dearborn, Dearborn Heights. We're building one right now in Westland, and we'd love to be a part of the city with the Quick Loop business. This is not an auto repair facility, this is basically a drive-through Quick Loop. Our main logo is 10-minute oil change, we try to get you in and out in 10 minutes.
Is there going to be anything other than the oil change?
No, no auto repair, no tire repair, none of that, just a drive-through Quick Loop. Come in, get your oil changed, your fluids topped off, we check your tires, and you're on your way out.
What do you plan on doing with the other bays?
We're going to keep a bay for storage, obviously, you know, for storage for filters and stuff, because we're going to, it doesn't have a basement in there now, it doesn't have a pit. And we're going to do a little waiting area in case you get somebody elderly, doesn't want to wait in their car, they want to get out, you know, to the lobby, which we try to keep them in their car to keep them, to keep it moving. And that place, to be honest with you, it's not projected to do 100 cars a day. I mean, we did our studies on it, it's like a 30, 40-car-a-day store, so three, four cars an hour, we close at seven, you know what I'm saying? It's a clean operation, it's not like a coin car wash, that's why I never got into the coin car wash business, because there are a bunch of headaches, people throw garbage, do things late at night there in the bays, and you guys know how that is. So we're turning into a, you know, eight-to-seven operation.
Yeah, that, that would be your hours, eight to seven?
Yeah, eight to seven, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, no loud music. I don't think, like, the guys were saying, the stacking shouldn't be a problem, like we said, you know, we have like six stacking the way we have it set up, and they're usually in and out in 10 minutes, 10, 15 minutes max. And it's like a 30, 40-car, a projected store, hopefully does that. And if that's 30, 40 cars, three, four cars an hour, I don't think you'll ever have any problems stacking. And exiting out on Ford Road, I don't think that's going to be a problem, because you finish one car at a time, you're not going to have four or five cars coming out at one time. You have one car come out, maybe a few minutes later, the next car comes out, if you're that busy. And it's only like, the Quick Loop business, as you guys know, sometimes it's like, it's peak hours, like, it's not really like busy all day. There's, the hours might go by where there's no cars for two hours there, you know what I'm saying? And if you guys are familiar with the car wash on Inkster, the, the one we fixed, it's going to kind of look, resemble that look, you know what I'm saying? We're going to make it modern, beautiful, beautify it. And we're, we're, you know, we'd love to be part of the city, you know? We, we, we did a deal on the, on it, we were supposed to buy it a few years back, we never did, which we should have, but the new owner that bought it owns multiple buildings in the area, and he kind of approached it to us, if you guys would like to come in here, because he'd like us to be his tenant. And they know how we do things, we do things right. I just dumped $7.5 million at Warren Valley Golf Course that the city of Dearborn Heights owns, and you can ask them what kind of job we've done there. And you guys seen what we did at the car wash on Inkster. We own in, like I said, we have in Allen Park, we have in Clanton Township, we have in Troy, we have, we're going to build one right now in Westland, I have in Redford, the car wash at Joy Road in Beach Daily. I turned a Bank of America into a, you know, drive-through car wash, and it's, that's what we do, you know, we, you know, we develop, we, we operate our own business, we're family-owned and operated, so we operate them personally, we don't just build them and walk away. So every business of ours has one of our guys there.
Okay, so you'll be managing...
We, we operate and manage our, every, every, every facility of ours, from my kids to my brothers to my nephews, so one of us is always at every location of ours. That's why we're successful, to be honest with you, because we don't neglect, we keep everything clean, we obey the law, and all, all our neighbors love us, I mean, you know? So...
How many employees do you plan to have there?
On that location, maybe three, maybe three. Sometimes we can get away with two during slow hours, but three is what we target.
Including the manager?
Yeah, yeah.
Where would you...
Because our manager works, like, he's not just a manager, you know, you know, everybody's got to work.
Where would you be parking the employees' cars?
I think we have it on the plan, where the vacuums, we're removing all the old vacuums there, the ones in the, in the front and the back, we're going to remove those, we're going to have employee parkings there.
For your employees?
Yeah, so two cars, three cars.
So they're not going to be on the road eventually?
No, no, no. And I promise you, there's no cars going to be on Helen, and if you guys want, I don't mind putting a, a nice iron gate, like professional one, three feet high, two feet high, at night, to close it off, so nobody goes in there at night and does things. But we never have these problems anywhere else, but we could do that if you'd like, because I know, that's a big problem there right now. Even the neighbors, when they seen us there, they came out, they were talking to us, like, one of the guys came out with a gun the other day there, because people were doing drugs in the back, you know, at 3:00 in the morning. So, we'd love to be a part of the city, and if you guys like us to do it, we're more than welcome. If you don't, we have no problem, we're going to go to the next, next location, so...
Am I missing, are you saying you're not having a repair place?
No, no, no auto repair there, strictly a drive-through Quick Loop.
Re-changing the print?
There's no repair on the print.
Do you have the print?
No, there's nothing on the print that says repair, is there?
Okay, but it said, on the paperwork, it said it.
It's just a Quick Loop drive-through oil change.
Okay, on the paperwork was framed in a small repair.
No, no, no auto repair. There's no auto repair. We don't, we don't, we don't want to hire no certified mechanics or nothing like that.
I think maybe the confusion is that oil change would be considered minor auto repair.
Well, I know that is a mechanic repair, I don't have that somewhere.
No, no, just a drive-through.
Actually, why we got you up here, if I could ask, you mentioned we're not doing repair, you didn't mention that we're going to have the bays. On the rendering, we're showing four bays, Site Plan 101, two bays, Arc 102, you're showing two bays plus a 18-by, we'll say, 18-by-10 garage, and then Arc 201, you're showing five bays. So you're going to have two working bays, and then a 20-by-20 garage?
We got two working bays that are going to be for the Quick Loop drive-through.
Okay.
The working garage is our storage.
Okay.
So there's not, no, no mechanical work, no, no lifts, no hoist, none of that stuff there. We're not, we're not into that business, so...
Okay, and then the bay that would be on the west side of the building, that looks just like an open drive-through, it's listed as a bay, but it appears to be just a drive-through?
What, that's my brother, he's more familiar with that.
So the fifth bay, we're leaving it open, we're not going to leave it as a car wash, that's like an emergency entrance or exit, if you guys would like that. That's the one that's closer to the collision shop, correct? Is that what you...
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah, so I want to, if you guys want me to do anything with that, we will, but I was going to just leave it open for either an entrance or an exit for emergency or something like that. In case someone changes their mind, they pull into the parking lot, they can just exit. So that's what I...
If you guys want us to block it off, we can block it off.
According to the print, we got parking for one car, and then it looks like, if you want it, we could probably go vertical against the property line, so there, there is enough room to pull around, even with that being there. And I'm just looking, as we move forward and start talking about those, what kind of ideas and what we could do to kind of appease everybody, but knowing that that is, it's listed as garage, the 18-by-eight, by 18-by-nine, whatever, we'll call it, 18-by-10, there's nothing going on, that's just...
There's nothing going on.
Strictly storage, and then the drive-through, it serves no purpose, other than just being a drive-through with a facade on the outside of it.
Exactly. So the first two bays, the ones that are closer to Helen, is going to be the oil change. The third one you see is a garage, but that's where going to be all our tanks and our storage unit for all our filters. And it's going to have a garage door, so we can be, they can deliver the oil.
Right, yeah, we got two operational, two operational bays, one, we'll say the 18-by-18 storage, and then your tank room is going to be on the, what, north, east or northwest corner?
Yes.
And then we'll have the open bay just past the office, which will be basically a drive-through. Okay. All right, I was just trying to understand that, looking at the print, what kind of idea we got going on.
Because usually when we build them from the ground up, we put a big, huge, like a basement, like, you know, under it, pour the tanks.
And there's storage underneath.
Everything's downstairs, but this one doesn't have this. So we're just going to open the, the, underneath the original two, the, the two east ones by Helen, so for the drive-through.
I have a question for you too. Mr. Ortega mentioned that you could be accepting to changing the driveway off of Helen. Right now, there's zero clearance at the lot line, and you would be able to move that forward?
So, I kind of misunderstood that when I talked to you earlier.
Helen side, the side streets.
That's, that's about the side street. I was thinking, you're talking about the front Ford roadside, where you wanted me to shrink it. That's when I said I will do that. But the one for Helen, that's very important, we need that one. But what we said we'll do is, because there's vacuums against that wall with the neighbor, we're going to remove all those vacuums, because people use those vacuums at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. I was talking to the neighbor, dude, he wakes up at 3:00 in the morning, and people are vacuuming their cars. So I'm going to remove all those vacuums, and maybe we can put trees to cover, like, the neighbor with the business.
Okay, there's...
Avervady trees or something.
Still going to be the, the wall between your business and the residential property behind it.
Yeah, we entered up the place.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Would you be open to suggestion, the variances, we're asking for 25 feet, correct?
Yeah.
If we could pull in 10 feet off of property line, that cuts your variance almost in half, shows that you guys are willing to make a change, and that way, you still got enough for a vehicle to turn in?
Yes.
And if you're, say, one car deep, you've still got enough to make that turn to get into line?
Yes, as long as we can turn it in there, we have no problem.
Will we compromise, you compromise, everybody's happy on that?
Yes, of course. Yeah, yeah, of course, we might have no problem with that. He's right here, just come up.
Did you have anything else, Tony?
Yeah, it's fine, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, of course.
And then we're going to put the, the dumpster's going to be on this corner here, it's already there, it's existing, okay.
And one more question for you.
Yeah.
With that open bay, before we move on talking about this, right now you're asking for 39% of the property for the variance. Could we shave that drive-through area, as long as the building's not there, because then technically, it's not part of your building? That would be less square footage of your building on that property line, and you guys would be asking for, you know, 21% variance as opposed to 39%?
We can cut it off, we don't need it.
It looks beautiful, I love the rendering, but, but if it helps and makes everybody feel good of, well, they weren't asking for that much, and we're willing to give it up.
We just didn't want to get into all that, and you know what, you know what I'm saying? But if we have to, we will, we were, you know, we just didn't want to alter too much of the building and stuff, but if, we have to do new foundation then, and put...
You got 100%.
You know, that's the only reason why we kept it there, we just left it as a...
Just an idea, if ever, if it comes up, and if it's a sticking point, if you guys are willing, we know that moving forward of, okay, cool, we can include that, and let's move on.
That's fine, we can cut that off.
For what they're doing.
Did you gentlemen have anything else you wanted to point out or tell us?
Excuse me, guys, we have quiet here.
Did you have something else you wanted to tell us?
No, we're good.
I think that's it.
That's it.
If you guys want to...
You were talking about the front driveway on the Ford Road, were you guys dealing with that?
I'm thinking existing, because we don't want to get into MDOT right now, man. MDOT will delay us freaking so long, and it's a big headache for nothing.
That's going to be addressed during Site Plan Review, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. If we approve it, yeah. It's not, not part of our decision process, so...
So that's existing exit. The cars, at the car wash right now, are exiting the same way, even with the oil change, they're going to exit the same way, so nothing's going to happen with the exit.
Right.
They're exiting the same way anyway, from the car wash or the oil change.
As we were all talking, I think Mr. May had mentioned, you guys, one of you guys, I know, it came from over here, the brick wall staying up, we're not going to replace that brick wall with a sound curtain of just Avervady's, you guys are keeping the brick wall existing, correct? Okay.
I don't know which one that is, but I can, all right, let's hit it.
And all of that will come along with the Site Plan Review. Okay, did you have anything else you wanted to point out?
We just, we'd love to have your blessing on this, and if we can move forward, we'd love to move forward with you guys. If not, there's no hard feelings.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
All right.
Have a seat.
Do they go by our recommendation to Site Plan? Do they go by our recommendation to Site Plan?
Yeah, they have to get Site Plan approval after this.
Something to come up, something to...
Well... We can, we can make that as a condition for approval, yeah. Okay, moving on, we'll open the public hearing. So if there's anyone here who wishes to come forward to make a comment, you can approach the podium and tell us who you are, and...
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Amanda, I'm a resident on Helen Street. I can absolutely attest that the car wash in the middle of the night is an absolute nuisance. Most, yes, most summers, I've lived on Helen for 15 years, I'm adjacent to the car wash, so firsthand experience, yes, it would be great to have regular business hours, because I can absolutely say that's, that's been a trial living there. I think that the traffic would absolutely have to be regulated, however, for the oil shop, just because it's, we have such a busy street. Sometimes we'll have ambulances that are going to the hospital, we have buses, we have the postman, we just have lots of traffic on our street. So if you guys could come up with a good plan for, because you guys were talking about stacking, so that we don't have that as an issue...
There shouldn't, there shouldn't be any stacking out onto Helen itself.
Okay.
All of the, the, the cars should all be contained in the parking lot behind the oil change business.
Okay.
That's why, one of the things we were talking about was moving the driveway would possibly result in less stacking spaces.
Okay.
So that's a consideration we have to...
Yeah, there's, there's already several cars that are parked out on our street, which kind of makes it challenging to back in and out of our driveway now. So if we were to have even more traffic just lined up on Helen, that would make it tough for the residents, absolutely.
I understand, okay.
I can show you on my phone too.
Oh, yeah, this is a large paper.
So this is where they enter, so our busiest oil change, we have Clanton Township, we do hundreds of cars, and we've never had people on the street. So this one's likely to be close to that, and you can fit six cars in, and a oil change a busy place, no more than 34 cars in there, so that will never have an issue on the street.
Okay.
So as you can see right here, that's the bays in two, four, six, you can fit six cars in the parking lot, so it's not ever having an issue.
I don't mean to...
Did you have anything else?
Okay.
I just need to check for public comments.
Oh, yeah, so that was, that's my biggest concern, along with, as long as, you know, all the chemicals and everything are contained, disposed the way they need to, I mean, with being close residents, you know?
Please address your comments to the board.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any comments that they'd like to make? Hey, no one? Do we have any written communications?
We do have one. I'll go ahead and read, please bear with me for a moment, it's a little lengthy.
Okay.
Says, "Good evening, we are writing to you as the owners of Podium Skates at 27854 Ford Road, and as Garden City residents. Our business is just east of the property, that is the subject of your public hearing. We are of the opinion that all businesses should require, should be required to meet the minimum, to meet the standard minimum requirements. In the request you have before you, there are not minor variances, and there are multiple variances being requested. variances being requested. We are aware that a lot of the time, thought and commitment goes into developing city ordinances. We trust the ordinances creating a barrier for this development were constructed for good reasons. Understandably, a request with small differences is one thing, but the request is fairly steep. We believe our ordinances should be followed, rewritten if they are not adequate, and that all businesses should comply with the city's requirements. It is our understanding, the owner of this property owns property adjacent and west of this parcel. It is also our understanding, the lease for the Harco renters is about to expire. One of our neighbors on Helen was visited by the developer and shared that information. With that in mind, do they not already own the property they need between the two businesses to meet the ordinances on file? If you aren't aware, parking for the business in the area, or the lacking of parking, has created many issues over the years. A prime example is when the city allowed the flibotomy business to exist without adequate parking. Homeowners and area businesses, area business owners suffer those consequences. This is another reason we do not support these variances. Today, with this plan, parking does not appear to be an issue, but trying to squeeze an oversized business into a current space certainly lays the groundwork for potential issues. The city has allowed the property in question to exist as an unintended car wash without restrictions on the hours of operation. The previous owner operated for six months without a COO and was uninterested in addressing serious concerns from his neighbors. So even when you have ordinances in place, issues arise that are fairly impossible to resolve. Due to the nature of the business and the absent unwilling owners, the negative impact on the quality of life for adjacent homeowners and neighboring businesses has been felt for decades. Getting the city to address the numerous violations, fights, noise, littering, et cetera, has been a huge problem for a very long time. While this is not a request for another car wash establishment, it is a request for something that is not designated for the space. Trying to fit a square pig into a round hole just never works. We encourage following the ordinances on file and working with the people involved to get a closer, more appropriate fit for this space, and to consider that this is a neighborhood first and foremost. The safety and tranquility of what people expect as residents should always be taken into account unless you are dealing with the industrial area. This is how we have maintained our business for over 35 years here. We thank you for your attention and service to the community. Please make your decisions with the quality of life for neighboring homeowners in mind, and respect our ordinances as they stand. Sincerely, Opal and Mike Farron."
Thank you. Was there anything else?
That's it for written communications.
Okay. Seeing no more written communications, we'll close the public hearing at 7:20.
Before we do so, may I ask a question? May I call the resident back up to the podium for a quick question?
Okay. Or just ask her where she is?
Yeah, where you are is fine. You said that you're adjacent to the property. Are you directly on the other side of that brick wall?
No, I'm the.
Across the street.
Okay. What are your opinions on where the driveway is located? Because it would affect you as well. Do you see any issues with that? Do you see a couple of feet making a difference, or where's that, with you living there? How do you feel?
Depending on the flow of traffic. Like, if it were backed up on Helen Street, yes, that would directly track me back out of my driveway. But if they were coming in off Ford Road, then it would be not, as long as they're not near Helen Street.
Yeah, we don't foresee that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the public hearing's closed at 7:20. We'll move on and have ZBA members' discussion. Who has any comments or questions? Anyone care to make a?
I feel we're going to be taking a car, a car wash and doing something a little bit better with it than what, what they're dealing with over there. I mean, we can't change the car wash. It will never be able to get changed. If they turn it into an oil change and take the hours of operation down, I think it'll help out the neighborhood.
Yeah, that would seem to improve the situation for the neighbors.
Yes.
Well, I think that if we, right now, if we can hold it 20,000 square foot, we're not going to find much of anything going in or that car wash should be here forever. And if they're going to take down, as suggested, if we put in our remarks, take down that west side section there, that are, that are short enough to square foot for the variance that they would need. Because if one needs the 7,000, they would be less than that. If you're not having that extra building that's smaller.
Taking that down's not going to change the.
That's what I was going to say, to give you more area.
I was just going to ask that next. If nobody's opposed to it, it's silly to ask them to change the renderings and what they have if everybody's fine with it. If there was an issue with square footage, then we could talk to them, at least knowing that they're willing to make concessions, but if everybody's fine, I think it's a null.
Other, these other repair facilities or whatever, you know, are existing in all these lesser spaces within the city, and I think the chairman even mentioned something about maybe rewriting, you know, some of the rules regarding.
We can look at the ordinance at another time, but.
We found another, you know, something that needs to be taken care of, you know?
Part of the problem he's going to have, though, is the roof coming over that west end bay is part of the collision shops building also. That's all attached.
Are they connected?
Yep.
Yeah.
Roofline is, yeah.
Yeah, so that would definitely create an issue. What, to the?
To the west end, the far west bay?
Collision shop, they're attached.
There's no, that's another car wash.
The wall to the car wash in that west bay is the wall to the collision shop. So the roof that goes over there.
They share a wall.
Huh?
They share a wall.
So the roofline tapers, goes right into the collision shop building. It's.
I'm baffled on that. Are you talking, on the property line?
No, the two buildings.
The one that, the one that abuts up to the Harco collision.
They're definitely, looks like they're touching from there or there.
Yeah, no.
Butts the roof.
But having them take that down isn't going to affect the variance anyway, so.
If everybody's good with it.
Right. I, I don't see the advantage of taking it down. It doesn't make the variance any smaller.
Yeah, no, because, I mean, on the renderings, it doesn't show attached there. They're going to change some of that around, so yeah, it's, it's a flat roof anyhow, it'd be quick fix. Chip shop, zip thing.
Knocked out the roof.
Three-day job.
Any other comments about this? Yeah, I think we, if someone cares to make a motion, we also have to include the specific grounds for the decision by referencing the sections of the ordinance that were under vehicle standards for approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Do we want to do these one at a time, or?
Can we do A and B together? Because I would say the same thing about both of them.
Yeah, I think so.
As long as you can, if you would like to, however you guys prefer to, I'll just, just verify during, so I can make proper notes for the following minutes.
Okay, yeah.
Are we good together?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Do A and B together and the other two separately?
I make the motion to approve of and grant parcel 35-011-04-0481-000. A schedule of regulations are three, vehicle repair facility, and grant the variance to the 7,804 foot square foot variance, along with its section, wait, section 154-137A. And B, section 154137, stating the minimum wattage of 150 feet, and granting the variance of 58 feet from dimensional requirement due to practical difficulty due to plotted development prior to modern dynamics.
I second.
Do you comment on the motion? Do you have that okay, Jake? Okay.
Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Take the roll. Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Hickman?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Your motion carries 6-0.
And now we need a motion for.
Section C. I just wanted to ask a question. On that motion, would we have put in that, how do we put in that we're going to request the 10 instead of 25?
Are you guys fine without the 10? If the neighbor doesn't have an issue with it?
Do we have to stipulate 15 instead of 25?
Well, not if we keep it where it is. We just grant the full thing. If it.
How do we, how do we feel about the situation? Right now, it's, it's on the zero lot line.
No, we don't like that. We're just talking about, you know.
You want, you want to move it 10 feet off?
Do you guys want it? 10 feet, are we good with where it is? If the neighbor's good with where it is, I say we save the civic money.
Well, we don't have a neighbor that lives right behind it.
They had an opportunity to be here.
That's true. It's, well, you know, we, we can do it either way. Whichever way we wish, or we think is best, we can say that we approve it with the zero lot, or the zero clearance, or we can say that with a lesser condition, we need to have it moved 10 feet off to make it more palatable, but.
If everybody's in agreement, I'm good with leaving it and giving them a full 25, unless you guys find a reason to object and move it.
I agree. I don't think.
I think there's an advantage to keeping it right at the lot line, because it'll allow more, more cars to be on their property when they're stacking.
If and when, yeah.
If it gets to the point where they need that.
Yep.
Okay, so let's just leave it and give them the variance, the 25-foot variance.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve and grant on parcel 35-011-4-0481-000. Let's see. More commonly known as the, what do you call it? Address, I'm sorry. 28016 Ford Road. And give it a 25-foot variance, I mean, a zero.
Zero foot.
Zero.
Yeah, 25.
It would be a 25-foot variance to allow for the zero, yeah.
From the various city zoning ordinance, and.
And we have to include the.
The driveway.
The grounds.
Edge of the driveway serving and outdoor vehicles. Let's see, what would that be? Clients hit the 25-foot driveway setback.
I would say section 1.
You can say that would be burdensome because, because of traffic problems.
Yeah. 154, 136?
Right.
Forgot my paper. 154, 137. Give the 25-foot variance. This dimensional setback.
Yeah, but we need to specify the grounds. We can, we could say that.
That would be in substantial justice.
Yeah, we could say that it would be burdensome under practical difficulty, and that it would grant them substantial justice. Is there a?
I'll second that.
Okay.
That one sounded real good.
Do what you do, Jake.
Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Mr. Richard?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Hickman?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
And the final variance, B. Need a motion?
I make a motion to approve and grant parcel 35-011-04-0481-000. More commonly known as auto repair shop. To grant variance based on section 154, or point 137J, in substantial justice. Let me give you some official wording, Jake. That the variance would give substantial relief to the owner, public safety and welfare, that it would not complicate or harm public safety and welfare. It presents no safety hazard, and also, there is no impact on land values.
We have support?
I second it.
Motion's debated, seconded. Any comments or questions on the motion? Take the roll, please.
Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Hickman?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, we have all four variances approved. Next need to contact Mr. Ortega before he'll do the administrative site plan review with you, and clean up any other issues that may arise. We appreciate you.
Gentlemen, thank you for bringing another business to the city.
Yeah, your building looks nice.
It's good, it's good you say that afterwards.
It looks as good as it does on the plan.
It looks beautiful. You seen what we did with the car wash?
Yeah, the plan looks good. It's really good.
Good night, gentlemen.
Yeah, next time I have to bring my pen right to shit.
Okay, we have.
Next time, we need a sheet prepared.
Yeah.
We're not done, gentlemen. We're not done.
We're not done.
Okay, other business? Mr. Ortega, do you have anything for us?
None at this time. I don't have any current applications in the foreseeable future.
Oh, okay.
So if not, then happy holidays.
Can you get us a cheat sheet?
Yes, forgive me, I know last, I know last time I was able to get it, and I, I missed that, missed that, right there. So yeah, next time, definitely give you all your options laid out in front of you, so you can pick and choose what you like.
I didn't have my pen when I'm stumbling, trying to find it.
You got there, though. I was very, you guys did a good job.
Hit three brick walls.
But yes, definitely from now on, you will be receiving sample motions for every variance.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullock, anything?
Nothing.
Hickman?
I have one thing. With the planning commission, will you guys be doing anything about rewriting the ordinances regarding the size or whatever?
Yeah, we, we, I think that should be discussed. I think possibly minor auto repair places shouldn't be lumped together with the gas stations, and, you know, maybe they don't need to have 150 feet of frontage.
Right.
We've been in progress for 14 years.
Well, a lot of our properties that we have are old, they're hard to build out.
Yeah.
Because they're small.
And a lot of minor auto repair places aren't that big. Okay, did you have anything? Did you have anything else, Morgan?
Are you good?
You good?
Oh, I checked, yes. Fred, you're hurting me. No, we're good.
Tony?
I'm good.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn? Got anything to say?
Yeah, I second the pre-planned motions.
Dude, I tried. I was trying to follow the old one. It's all jumbled up.
I give him, I give him the document, he can copy paste. I love that.
Makes the meetings go shorter.
True, yeah. Oh, I will definitely have.
Definitely rubber stamp that.
We, not going to lie, it was pretty close.
Yeah.
No, it's, when I first came in, it was 52 minutes last month. This one, little over, went hour and seven, hour and eight.
Oh, well.
We're getting there. Still get home for Final Jeopardy.
Okay, well, the next, next regular zoning board for appeals meeting will be Wednesday, December 17th, as needed.
December 17th?
Yes.
See, in April.
Someone cares to make a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn. I got that one right.
Second.
Motion's debated, seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion's carried.
Thanks for the help.